Good afternoon and welcome everyone to our Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources Work Session. Today is Monday, April 29, 2024. My name is John Kofalas, Commissioner from District One, joined by my Commissioner colleagues, Jody Shadak-Mcnally from District Three and Kristin Stevens from District Two. Across the way, we have our County Manager, Loretta Volker. We have four items on the agenda, and I will turn it over to Leslie to queue things up.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Leslie Ellis, Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources Director. Our first two items are hosted by our staff in engineering and some folks who you don't have the pleasure of seeing all the time at work sessions. So I'll just do some quick introductions. To my left, Rusty McDaniel, who you know, and Eric Purcell and Justin Core are here to speak about the first item, the Taft Hill Road Project, and then we'll switch gears and talk about the Miller Fork and Black Creek Project. So take it away, Eric.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Like I said, my name's Eric Purcell. I'm the project manager for Larimer County on the Taft Hill County Road 19 widening. And it's been about two and a half years since we sat in front of you, so we felt like it was a good opportunity to bring you up to speed as we navigate our difficulties on the project. Just as reference, up here we have a map showing the location. County Road 19 from Horse Tooth Road, extending through the Harmony intersection and then tapering back at Brixton to entrance to subdivision there. The project consists of expanding to two lanes, northbound and two lanes, southbound, are also adding bike lane on the east side, which currently does not have that facility, as well as sidewalks from Harmony to Horse Tooth on the east side. Along with that, we get drainage improvements. Currently, there is no curb and gutter on the east side of the project. As a reminder, this is a cooperative effort with the City of Fort Collins. Back in 2018, we applied for a grant and were given that grant in 2019. The original project budget was 5.3 million. That grant was 3.8 million of it. The balance, including match, was coming from regional road fees from Fort Collins. We initiated design in 2019. Since then, we've had a few obstacles, including COVID, some significant turnover over at Fort Collins, as well as with our designers, the original design team. That firm no longer exists, and so we had to go back out and find a new design team. We had our initial public meeting virtually due to COVID, and that was back in November of 2020. We then followed up with an in-person meeting in November of 2022. Since then, we've gotten approval from CDOT for right-of-way acquisition. We've been actively working on that for the past year, year and a half. The plan set has gone through several iterations. Along the way, there's been some design standard changes. The bike lane that was originally slated to be within the roadway has been moved up behind the curb and gutter for a grade-separated bike lane. Along the way, costs have increased, both from a design standpoint, the acquisition of right-of-way as property values increase, as well as just a little bit of scope creep on the project, adding amenity to the overall package. So currently, there's a shortfall in the budget. So we're looking anywhere from three and a half to $4 million shortfall that we're working diligently with the City of Fort Collins. We've applied for and been unsuccessful on a few grants. There's another grant round open that we're hopeful that we'll receive additional funds on. We're also investigating other opportunities to use that regional road fee to get this project built in 2025. Our main responsibility on the project is Larimer County is obtaining the right-of-way, and we're underway with that and have secured several properties. But we also felt like we should give you a little bit of update of where that was going, and Justin Cork can kind of take over and let you guys know where we're at in that process.
Thank you, Eric. Justin?
Thanks, Eric. Justin Cork, Senior Land Agent in the Engineering Department. So as Eric mentioned and kind of described, I mean, you know, with any road and bridge project, there's usually a right-of-way acquisition component. And for this particular project, it's a fairly significant component in terms of the number of properties, which you can kind of tell from looking at the map and the value of the properties, given the location in a more kind of suburban environment, where we're working with smaller properties, not out farther in the county like we are sometimes with our projects. So even though Fort Collins is kind of the lead on the project, since these landowners are in Larimer County, the county is leading the right-of-way acquisition efforts. And with the grant that's part of the project, we do have to follow the CDOT kind of review process, which requires a CDOT-certified right-of-way acquisition consultant to perform those acquisitions. So for this project, we're working with our on-call right-of-way contractor, Western State's Land Services. As Eric mentioned, they've been involved since the beginning. We had the public meeting in November of '22, and then, you know, acquisitions basically kicked off right after that, in beginning of 2023. So there's 17 landowners total that we're working on acquiring right-of-way from. Some of those landowners own multiple parcels, so there's actually more properties than landowners that need acquisitions from. We've secured the property interest that we need to facilitate the project from 10 of those landowners. So we've got seven left to work with. At the end of March, final offers went out from our consultant to those remaining landowners. So they should have received those, or they did receive those, kind of the first week of April. We feel pretty good about where things are with most of those folks. Two of them, I think we have meetings coming up with in the next couple of weeks to kind of go over things. One is ready to kind of get things finished and wrapped up. We're just working on coordinating a meeting with them to get the documents signed. There's one that's working through some just technical kind of language and one of the temporary construction easements. That's not a significant issue for us. It's just taking more time to work through. Similar to that, we've got a landowner working through an estate issue, so there's just some complexities and title that have slowed the process down. So not necessarily negotiation-related, but just having to work through some additional issues to take more time. And then there's two landowners that we have not heard from since sending those final offers out. One of those offers, the deadline to respond was today, and then another one is May the 11th. So we're keeping in touch with those folks to try to, you know, come to a point of agreement in terms of just compensation for the right-of-way that the county needs to acquire. And, you know, that's kind of the update is to where we are now with the right-of-way acquisition. You know, if we run into any challenges or have to look at other options, for folks to be able to get the right-of-way squared away, we would just, we would come back to the board to get your guidance. But for right now, it's really just an update on where things are to let you know more about the project, should any landowners reach out directly to the board with questions.
Thank you, colleagues. Commissioners, do you have any questions or feedback? Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, thank you for the update. I live pretty close to that area, so I was just kind of curious, and so I appreciate knowing what's happening. With the shortfall that you have, are the grants that you're hoping to get through the MPO, or what kind of grants are you looking at to fill in that gap?
A couple of the grants that we applied for were through the MPO, some STBG money and TAP and MMOF, and we were unsuccessful with acquiring those. We're working with the city currently on a, I think it's the CPF, Congressional Funding. I don't remember what the middle one stands for. It's due tomorrow at the end of the day. So we're working with them to get that submitted, and hopefully we'll get a little bit additional funding.
Yeah, that's great, because I mean, it's a great project. I mean, it definitely has some multimodal benefits to, you know, to have that sidewalk on that east side and some protected bike lanes is going to be very beneficial for the folks that live there and are trying to. There's also a lot of affordable housing there, too, so it feels like there can be definitely a case to be made for any funding that requires, you know, DI communities to be involved and stuff. So let me know if there's any way that I can help with any of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Shadak McNally?
Thank you. So this is how I get to and from work, and it's been, you know, like I'm sure you all have heard this, about the construction, and there's a pretty well-used school right there on the corner and turnoff, and it can get very congested and backup for quite a ways. Is there, have you talked with, say, Fort Collins or others, maybe putting a sign? If it's going to be more down to one lane or some changes, or if that's done maybe way all the way back to Trilby or something, to say suggesting a different pattern, or can you get into Google saying, "Don't go this way"? I'm just curious, because they can really, you know, because it gets down to just two lanes, there's no way to get off, and people are flipping U's, and I'm just worried about the safety on Taft Hill way before Harmony, you know, heading up the hill from the landfill that people are, you know, turning around and some of the traffic backups. Just curious about that for future things, because I'm assuming there's going to be more work, and there was down to one lane quite a bit, so.
The answer is yes. I think we, you know, we had the opportunity to see a little bit of the traffic flow that comes through there with the waterline project. While that was an inconvenience to the community, we're appreciative. The Fort Collins Loveland Water recognized that we had a project in that area fast-track their project in order to minimize the disruption to our new pavement and our new roadway. I think there were lessons learned from that. I think we adapted in the middle of that project to try and address those. That project was a little bit more invasive in nature due to the depth of work and working through the intersections in a way that we aren't necessarily, we've taken our first stab at a construction phasing plan for that project, and we believe we're going to be able to maintain a higher level of traffic through the project than the waterline was able to. But we are cognizant that the intersection at Harmony is probably the hardest. And so some pre-warning, we attempted that with some VMBs out at Trilby and 19, but point well taken, and yes, we are diligently working on that component as well.
I appreciate that, and I know that water project was pretty extensive, but anyone in that area then trying to go over onto Shields, and there was another project, it was, it was quite, I heard a lot from folks, too, just really frustrated. So, but I had them, you know, referred them to the City of Fort Collins, because that was their waterline project. But I appreciate you guys taking those lessons learned, because I think, safety-wise, just having people flip U's on Taft Hill was kind of alarmed me. So thank you very much for having that coordination and that, those conversations.
Thank you. Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. My understanding is that the breaking of ground for this project would be in 2025, if I heard that correctly. And if that is the case, is that entirely contingent upon securing the shortfall in funding? That's my first question.
That's correct. 2025 is our target date. As we've looked at the costs associated with delay, we really are targeting 2025 to minimize any further escalation in costs.
And what happens if we don't get the money, the grants? Does that delay it further?
So I'll let Rusty talk a little bit, but we're also looking at other ways to leverage the regional road fee, future income towards this project.
I think just to follow up a little bit more on that, the local match and the overmatch that Eric's talking about is that regional road fee that the City of Fort Collins collects specifically for the projects in the growth management area, and so it's an agreed-upon project and project funding that we use that on. One of the thoughts is, is if there's a way that the city could lend the money to the project and then pay itself back over time with that, with that funding is one of the options we're looking at if we don't get the grant money. So we're trying really hard, as Eric said, to find a way to build in 2025, just because we kind of keep losing ground with inflation and everything else that's going on to try to keep up with that shortfall.
Thank you. Just, if I may, just a couple more questions. One is, just came to mind, and that is, once the project begins, will there be any opportunities to perhaps lay fiber optic line, you know, if we're digging up the ground? Are there any opportunities for that if it's needed?
So currently, Connections has a project to bring internet service to the subdivision, to the subdivision to the east, and they're working with us on their plans of the area right-of-way that they need. We need to acquire that right-of-way so that the work only happens once.
Perhaps my last question, and that is, so once the project breaks ground, how long is it going to take to get it done?
So we think it'll be achieved in a single construction summer. I believe it's six to seven months, depending on the phasing and if the intersection goes in concrete, that would be the larger number of seven months.
Great. Thank you, Eric. I don't have any other questions. Yes, Commissioner?
Just all of a sudden, a kind of a little alarm went off in my head. That's intersection for Horse Tooth, and if it's over the summer, is there some maybe communication with folks using that for boats and maybe heads up, just maybe, I'm just trying to be proactive, try to educate folks about construction and delays and thinking that, you know, people hauling boats might be, maybe take a different route or something. I don't know what your thoughts. I don't know if we should connect with DNR and have them maybe communicate to some of the folks who might be frequent users, so they have that information ahead of time. Has that some conversation you thought maybe about, or even biking clubs, too? I'm just curious. The more we educate folks and give them awareness, maybe the less frustrated they'll be, so.
Absolutely. I think it's key, particularly with the Harmony intersection, that it get out there. In our construction phasing, we are assuming that the majority of the traffic will have a trailer and a boat, and making that assumption affects the work. And so not only, yes, you're correct, we should get out to the public with the message, but we're also phasing our construction, assuming that during the summer, there's going to be a lot of boat traffic traveling across that intersection.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, colleagues? Kristin, or Commissioner? You're good. Thank you very much.
We appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you all for your diligence and partnering on that project. Mark Peterson is going to join us with some others from the team to talk about the Miller Fork and Black Creek flood risk study.
So while you folks are settling in, I just wanted to share a quick little story that engineering folks might appreciate. We had our granddaughter over, one that I brag about, and she decided on her own that underneath her little work area in our home, she wanted to build an engineering lab. And so she set up the light underneath her desk and had a table, and what she wanted to do was all these things that she could take apart, that, and then she put them back together. So I thought, oh, this, this big pile of engineers, you might appreciate that. And certainly, we don't want to exclude our road and bridge folks as well.
Sorry, we're having some minor technical difficulties getting the screens switched over. There we go. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mark Peterson, Engineering Director. With me up front here as well is Karen Nizat, who's our Floodplane Administrator, and Tracy Shambo, who you all know is our Senior Engineer overseeing Development Services, Floodplanes, and Stormwater. So we wanted to come visit with you briefly today about Miller Fork and Black Creek, which are two stream channels up in the retreat area just east of Glenhaven. You all are probably very aware of, you know, what that neighborhood has undergone after the Cameron Peak Fire. And so just to give you and the audience a brief overview, you know, 96% of the Miller Fork-Black Creek watershed was impacted by the Cameron Peak Fire in 2020. The residential area was mostly spared from direct effects of the fire, but then being in the Miller Fork and Black Creek watersheds, they've experienced repetitive and significant flood events. And the county, through the Emergency Watershed Protection Program funded by the National Resources Conservation Service, did a lot of work rebuilding roads, putting up flood barrier bags and the like. As it notes on the slide, there were more than 20 LITA alerts issued over the summer of 2023 for flash flooding, potential flash flooding events, and the largest event occurred last August of 2023. It is also significant as a source for domestic water for the City of Loveland. significant as a source for domestic water for the City of Loveland. So, Karen's been working closely with the Colorado Water Conservation Board, and they've recently come to us and said they'd be willing to fund $40,000 towards trying to address some of the flood risk, to better identify the flood risk in the Miller Fork and Black Creek drainage basins. One of the big time constraints we have on it is they're utilizing funding that's available in the remainder of their fiscal year, and their fiscal year ends June 30. So, we have to have it allocated and in use by that timeframe. We have the Firm of Air's Associates, who has done a lot of the prior flood mitigation work and even some preliminary flood modeling in that basin available to us. One of the first things that would be done would be to go get up-to-date LiDAR data, Light Detection and Ranging. It's basically laser scanning of the ground surface to develop new topography or up-to-date topography, because a lot of things have happened in the last two years in those drainageways. So, it would be to get up-to-date topographic information to get better hydraulic modeling done. So, it would be immediately go out and start to do surveying to develop some more up-to-date hydraulic models. Ultimately, we're trying to get a handle on flood risk, and the data could be used in the future to delineate or adopt regulatory flood models as well.
Mark, one moment, please.
Yes, sure.
Commissioner Shattuck McNally?
I can wait till Mark's done. I just want to make sure that you saw my hand, because I have certainly some questions. So, thank you.
Yes, I am getting better at using my peripheral vision. Thank you.
So, the proposed area of study really goes about two miles up the Miller Fork to an upper crossing that's actually a private road crossing. The county, again, through EWP, both, and Road and Bridge, has done a lot of work in there as well. And the county, through projects using our contractor, has done work on several of the crossings in this system. The purpose to get flood risk mapping would be to extend what we have for mapping. There's very limited mapping done back in the, I believe, the 70s or early 80s. Only goes a few hundred feet up the Miller Fork Basin. Again, now we've seen repetitive flood events. We believe it would be prudent to identify flood risk up this drainageway. Again, the Colorado Water Conservation Board supports that, and they've been willing to support or put money towards it. Based on the timeframe to utilize the money, we're looking at needing to start data collection middle of May. This has more detail in terms of flood events. This is hydrologic analysis done by Air's Associates after the fire. And what you tend to see, if you compare pre-fire versus post-fire flood events, what was a 100-year flood before the fire ends up only being about a 10-year or 10% annual chance recurrence flood event after the fire. As we go to do flood risk identification, we would be doing it for sort of pre-fire conditions. What FEMA, you know, considers to be a regulatory floodplain is not associated with a burn event or a disaster that the watershed is expected to recover, flood events are going to go back down. We already have information describing sort of post-fire risk out there. And this is, this map is an example of some of the analyses that were done by Air's to identify post-fire flood risk on the Miller Fork Basin. And you can't see it very well here, but this white line is the floodplain that was delineated that exists out there for the Miller Fork currently. So, we'd be extending that floodplain farther up the system. So, what we have in front of us to utilize the state funding is, like I said, an immediate need for field surveying. It would be done using drones. That would start the middle of May. We want to get public notification out to the property owners. We've got to obtain, you know, rights of entry from some of them to be able to set up some ground control that Air's would be doing. And then, it would give us detailed floodplain modeling for the 100-year event, pre-fire storm condition. That modeling would be done and expected to be completed in the June timeframe, with then GIS and other data being delivered to the county in July or so. And it would give us the ability to look at flood risk, and if appropriate, you know, we could utilize the mapping for a future local or FEMA-designated floodplain. So, that's the extent of our presentation. Be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. And before we go to the Commissioners, I wonder, do either of your colleagues wish to add anything to your presentation?
I think Mark was able to get it across pretty well. I did a lot, too. It's like, I helped bring him all of the information.
Yes, I should have acknowledged it, Karen, put the presentation together.
And Tracy, anything you want to add?
Nothing to add for me.
Just want to give you the opportunity. Thank you. Commissioner Shattuck McNally, please.
Thank you. I have a few questions, Mr. Chair, just to let you know. I know this area well. I've walked it probably a dozen times at least since 2021, at least. And I know you just were all up there last week with a large group. Did you kind of mention this potential, that's my first question, potential opportunity?
So, none of us at the table were up with the group. I believe Todd and Rusty were up there and met with the Association Board members who were in attendance as well. I don't believe this was discussed with any of them.
Okay. Second question, well, comment first. I'm super excited and think, yes, go, please help. What, yeah, let's do it. And how can we help you get this done? So, along with that, this is, between the NCRS and I don't know who all else, and us, we put four and a half million dollars to reconstruct this. It would be nice to be able to do what we can to protect the infrastructure, not protect and save lives. So, I'm curious, once it's all done, you know, as I've said all along, walking up there, what can we do to get way upstream to figure out how to help correct or help to mitigate some of these flows when they do flow, the post-fire flooding? And they've had it before, because even all of them said this in 2022, that flooding was worse than 2013. So, I'm just curious, will this help us figure out some literally upstream mitigation work, or what we need to do to help future kind of life-threatening events?
Well, so, again, to be clear, what this is going to identify is flood risk more from a floodplain perspective. So, you know, it may potentially impact property owners that have a delineated floodplain. You know, they may see it as a negative in some respects, because their property is going to be identified as being in a flood-prone area. It would inform future buyers of properties as to, you know, potential risk. The watershed coalitions and other volunteer groups, and Karen could speak to this in more detail, because she's interacted with them, but they are planning activities to try to do stabilization in upstream portions of the watershed, as well as put in some sediment basin collection areas in the proximate area to the lower end of Black Creek. So, there are efforts underway to try to stabilize the watershed to some degree. But this isn't really getting at, it's information that could be used for further activities, but it's not directly going to identify activities to stabilize the watershed or change the conditions from where they are.
So, I guess I have more. So, then, this might have some folks not thrilled, because it might change some of their property values or some of the things, like bridges over streams and stuff that would be in the floodplain. Would that be a fair statement?
Well, what you're going to run into is if you identify and delineate a new floodplain that we regulate towards that, that does put those properties, especially if they're inside the limits, they could potentially need to obtain flood insurance from a lender or things like that. So, you know, if you look at, historically, what's happened in the Glenhaven area is major flooding occurred on West Creek and the upper portion of the North Fork and Flood Creek, or excuse me, Fox Creek. And that occurred after the 76 flood, and it also occurred after the 2013 flood. And those drainageways all have detailed floodplanes going up them now. What we've run into with the retreat is it's now been experiencing significant flooding, and it's been identified as having fairly significant flood risk along it. And we feel it would be prudent to delineate a floodplain, or at least identify the limits of flood risk up that drainage basin in the areas where you have significant development having occurred.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And I just think this is important work, because it's important information. So, thank you for bringing this forward, and I'll look forward to learning more about the data. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. You know, I'm glad we're looking at this area. We know the problems that we've had in this area. Does the $40,000, will that be enough money to cover all the costs for the study?
We're still trying to get a final estimate from Air's to extend it up, extend the study to the full two-mile limit. That potentially is only about half the funding that's going to be needed. We have some residual funding that's been set aside for flood analysis, even going back to the Cameron Peak Fire. And it's carried over, some of it carried, excuse me, Cameron Peak Fire went all the way back to the 2013 flood. So, we believe we've got that covered with that remaining funding, using that other funding.
Great. Yeah, I was going to say $40,000 sounds like a good deal. I don't, I feel like everything's, everything's close to, closer to $100,000 is kind of what I'm prepared when we're talking about consultants and mapping. Well, yeah, I mean, I think this is a, you know, I think this is important to push forward. I'm glad you, you know, gave us an update on this. Certainly, you know, get some answers about how, you know, what's happening in this area, maybe how we can mitigate for some of these issues. And yeah, look forward to seeing some of the results. Thank you.
Thank you. I wonder, the chart that you folks showed regarding the calculated peak discharge, there's some stark numbers there. Could you take a moment to explain those numbers a little bit more, what the implications are?
Again, that's typically what we see when you have a significant forest fire and a, you know, significant burn from, you know, watershed, is post-fire flows, and that's what we deal with or have been dealing with since High Park, is we see significant increases in what would be produced by a thunderstorm event, you know, under normal conditions and wouldn't cause anything to happen. All of a sudden, a neighborhood that's never seen significant flooding before experiences it. And it does seem like a lot of the storm events that have occurred after Cameron Peak have occurred over the Miller Fork watershed. It's almost like it's been ground zero for significant rainstorms. So, it, and it has been borne out, you know, with the barrier bags pretty much saving some houses from being very, very impacted. And they're seeing a lot of sediment deposition in the lower areas and erosion in the upper parts of the watershed. So, until the watershed kind of restabilizes and gets re-vegetated, you tend to see these increased flows for five to 10 years or more. It really depends on the burn severity.
So, in the summer of 2023, did we see some of these kinds of peak flows?
Yeah, I don't know exactly what the, if anybody made a calculation on what the peak flows were, but we saw some of our EWP-funded protection projects, where we went in and put in a new culvert, and we put in some really big riprap, and it blew out during an overtopping event. They had to go back and reconstruct it using what's referred to as Matrix Riprap, which is a partially grounded riprap. It's technology coming out of Europe. And those structures have withstood some overtopping events subsequent to that as well.
Thank you for further explaining, Mark. Thank you. Colleagues, do you have any other questions or feedback or anything? Then I believe we're done. We can move on. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Rebecca is coming up to join us here shortly.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Rebecca Everett, Community Development Director. I have just a couple updates for you today. First, I wanted to let you know that your 3:00 land use hearing for next Monday, May 6, has been canceled. We had no items on the agenda for that. I know you have a big hearing that evening, so hopefully that gives you a little bit more time next Monday afternoon. Second, I know all three of you track a lot of activity at the state legislature, but I wanted to call attention to one bill that was recently signed that does have an effect on our county regulations, and let you know what we plan to do as follow-up for that. So, House Bill 24-1007 relates to occupancy limits in residential dwellings. And so, this bill, which was signed by the governor in the last week or so, prohibits residential occupancy limits that are tied to a familial relationship or a definition of family. It still allows local governments to regulate building occupancy based on health and safety requirements, so fire code, water or wastewater service availability and capacity, building code standards, things like that. But we cannot, can no longer regulate occupancy based on family composition within a household. Our land use code in Larimer County does limit occupancy right now to one living unit, which is defined as a family plus two unrelated individuals. And so, this new legislation does affect our, the way that we currently treat occupancy within our code. HB 24-1007 invalidates those occupancy limits that we have in Larimer County and the way that a living unit is currently defined. So, we'll be working on a land use code change in our next round of annual land use code amendments to address that and make sure that we're in compliance with the new bill. I also want to mention, we haven't been proactively enforcing occupancy in Larimer County. We don't have the resources within co-compliance to have been doing that. So, functionally, it doesn't change how we're, how our co-compliance team is operating right now. It doesn't affect our staffing or resources within co-compliance, but it does invalidate one of our, one of our code provisions that we do have on the books currently.
Thank you, Rebecca. Colleagues, do you have any quick questions or comments regarding this legislative matter that affects our land use code? Did you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I wondered about that, because people asked me question, but I, questions about it, but I wasn't sure how much it was throughout the code. So, but we haven't, just to clarify, we have not been actively enforcing it. So, how, does that all, it wouldn't impact our short-term rentals, because they're short-term, and it didn't impact those. It's just the long-term residency, correct?
That's correct. This only relates to dwelling units, and short-term rentals are not treated as dwelling units. They're treated as more of a lod, form of lodging. And so, we have confirmed that this occupancy, these occupancy limits do not apply to short-term rental regulations. We can, we can still set occupancy limits that are based on other health and safety standards that we have, such as water, wastewater, capacity, parking, size of room, number of beds, things like that.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, it just invalidates the code, and then it's up to us to see if we want any health and safety kind of measures. to see if we want any health and safety kind of measures. And I'm just wondering if staff recommends anything that we should, you know, as we look at replacing that language in the code, you know, should we, you know, is it a best practice to look at square footage of the house? Is it, you know, I mean, you know, size certainly, like, you know, some septic issues and things like that. So I'm wondering if you're going to bring something back to us or if we just keep it invalidated right now, or what are our next steps?
Yeah, we already functionally regulate occupancy using some of those health and safety measures in other codes, not in the land use code itself, but through building permitting and through the health department's reviews and fire department reviews. So that's already happening, that we're setting some limits based on how much the septic system can handle, for example, or well permits, things like that. It may be helpful for us to, right now, we can rely on the land use code occupancy limit when we communicate to people. We probably don't have good resources, you know, written up right now that pull together some of those other health and safety limits. So I think we don't need to change our regulations in any of those areas or add any new regulations to the land use code, but we could communicate those a little bit more clearly.
Yeah, that might be helpful. But thank you. I'm, for one, glad to see it gone.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Do you have other things to present, Rebecca?
That's it for my updates today. Thank you.
Oh, great. Thanks. Leslie?
Yes, really just one item, and that is to remind you that we have an open house for the public on Wednesday for the water plan, and it's from 6:00 to 8:00 in Carter Lake here. There's been a lot of information that's gone out, but if the public's interested, there's more information on the larimer.gov-planning-water webpage as well. So that is it for my updates this afternoon.
Well, I think we are done with our business this afternoon, unless Lauren, does anything you'd like to share?
Mr. Chair, a question, may I ask a question, please?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Thank you, Leslie. I was wondering about the open house. Is it just come and go as you please, or is there a presentation at the beginning? Can you explain kind of the format? I unfortunately have folks who want to get on my calendar that evening. I said, well, this is priority first, so I'm just curious what it looks like. Thank you.
Yes, happy to. It is a drop-in format. There are presentations that will be running in the background, and staff will be available to answer questions, but it's a series of posters and information, and it will also be available online for folks who cannot attend in person.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. I believe now we are done with our afternoon business. At 2:15 PM, we are adjourned. Thank you to the technology team.